With the letter of the city of justice.
Meeting of Wauhui City Council August twenty first or twenty six, twenty twenty five, seven o'clock P M. The meeting document posted on the wall. Road call.
Stuart Creachey.
Here.
Shane Sweet.
Here.
Charles Warfer.
Here.
Brian Ideas.
Here.
Chris Rappel.
Here.
Patrick Nagle.
Here.
In the audience, anyone have something they want to talk about that's not on the agenda? I doubt. Okay. Department head reports, we don't have any. Consent agenda, as much standard. An item is item three that might want to talk about a little bit.
Um, you had a question about the league, is that right?
I was just saying for for the price, explain to us the the importance and and what we're getting out of it. Give us that.
Okay, I I also am a little bit frustrated with the price, I that's why I included the the information in our membership piece. However, I will say, uh, when it comes to defending local control and defending municipalities in the legislature, uh, the institutional knowledge that the league, uh, the league office has and the work that they do in meeting with senators and especially the term limits have really impacted. Um, I know term limits are kind of an old thing now, but there's a lot of training that they have to do on new senators. And so I think being part of the league is important. Um, they did just construct a new building, which was very much needed. The building that they were working in before was, um, gosh, I don't know, over a hundred years old and it not. This meeting, I was just at the league office this afternoon, attending the Small Cities Legislative Committee. And we, this committee meets three times in the fall to determine here and determine kind of priorities of legislation and issues that municipalities are dealing with, bring our ideas, uh, bring our suggestions. And then the larger cities and the smaller cities combine, make take action and make recommendations to the league exec committee that then sort of directs Lynn and her staff on on what to focus on in the legislature. They, in addition to this, uh, to the legislative, uh, services that they provide and basically being lobbyists for municipalities, um, they offer training and, um, the municipal review that you get, is published by them, there's a utilities newsletter. I think it's necessary for us to be a part of it, I'm just surprised a little bit at the amount in membership.
Was there a membership last year or is it based on population?
I think there is some that's based on population, but that information is in.
There's nineteen thousand.
Yeah, here's the.
The increase from last year doesn't seem like that much, boy, since three years ago.
Is this the rotating? I don't know if this is hard.
Yeah, I mean, seventy five hundred bucks, well, it's ten dollars a year.
I can't, sorry.
Thirteen to sixteen to nineteen.
If you make it larger.
Yeah, that's the jump. Yes, sir. It's thirteen, sixteen, nineteen, I mean, like you said, from last year for a thousand dollars, but from the year before, you know, we jumped seven thousand actually.
So what's next year to be?
What?
What's next year to be? When we get to a point where we say nothing more?
Yeah, and I think, you know, if this is what ours is doing, sorry if you have to read this sideways, but, um, it is in the packet online. I'm sure this conversation is happening at Fremont, at Papillion, at some of the other, uh, communities as well.
I mean, I do think we need representation in the legislature, I do think they're doing a good job. I got a question there, I I think we need involvement, but that is expensive.
Yeah, let's get into the point. I mean, as you mentioned the other day, if they're growing as much as they are, we'd say that we could slow down some of the growth of the fees if they had new members.
Well, this is not law.
Oh, you're right.
This is the League of Nebraska Municipalities and.
It gives us access to.
It gives us access to law.
So we've got to do this.
So we have to.
Yes, I forgot that, you read that from what you printed off.
Rather than all the other.
If you rotated it or rotate the whole thing, but the page with the cog in the middle, you get. Rotate. Oops, sorry, I did it too far now. Yeah, there we go, there's what it's done. This is collective, this is annual, last year was nineteen, sixteen, thirteen, twelve. And I think it's it's fair, because this is not something, the league exec board is not subject to open meetings law. They don't hold their meetings where there's public input. Uh, I think it would be fair if we wanted, if you wanted, as a city council, to send a letter to the league execs board saying, we understand price change, we understand that you have are paying for a new facility where trainings and different things can be accommodated maybe without renting space at the courthouse for, which is something that they have done quite a bit of. However, we feel this is about our limit in terms of membership fee.
Is there competing groups? I mean, like in, there's Nebraska Bankers Association, there's Independent Community Bankers Association, American Bankers, and every one of them is seven to ten thousand dollars. So this would pay for two or three of them and you only need one if they're going.
There is no competing.
Okay.
The we very much represents municipalities, just like Nebraska Association of County Officials, NICO represents the county, right?
Do you know what they're doing, Zara?
I don't.
Said, I don't believe you can walk away from it, boy, doesn't that feel like the Gacha of a barrel? Especially if they have a locker of war.
No, and I, there's there's reasons why they are not a public entity, because there's some conversations probably that are had in that executive committee that don't need to be public in terms of strategizing and all of that, that. So I understand that aspect of it.
Any other questions?
I think they're also a a good representative for cities with other agencies, like with Department of Revenue or they meet with charitable spending, they meet with the governor, they met with Department of Economic Development, uh, they probably partner with the development district. So I'm sure there's more benefits than just the fee that I have mentioned.
Yeah, I don't doubt that they do a great job, but I don't doubt that it's a necessary, uh, organization to be part of. But I don't know anybody else who can triple their fees in a short time. Again, I just feel like we have to, and I don't know that I can walk away from it, but at the same time, I just hate the idea that the only other option is what not be members, I just don't, I don't like the idea of it at the same time. Yes, I would love to send a letter that says mercy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, if you look at that sheet that you had up there, the ground here is a total development.
Approaching trickle since we started.
Well, not since we started.
Well, since, I guess, since the sheet started.
Yes, the city of Wauhui has been a league, a member of the league since, like, I think maybe we're a founding member of the league when it started. So we have a very long history, in fact, Daryl Wrightmeyer, when he was mayor the first time, was president of the league. So there is opportunity for any of you also, if you wanted to be involved, to certainly get involved in terms of attending Small City Legislative Committee or attending conferences or being on exec board, there's all those options. Huh?
I set up a bill on Tuesdays for five to five.
We wanted a letter written.
I would love that, yeah, but that would be, I would ask that we just write a letter that says, hey, I appreciate y'all and what you do, but please keep an eye on these fees because this is going to be excessive. But again, probably the letter should have been written last year, because this year wasn't as big a jump, but just looking at the last three years, that is that's a pretty good jump from thirteen to twenty.
Is what this is.
All work on the letter, send it around. Anything else on the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as long as we can express our opinion to, in order to, to make second.
Other discussion, road call.
Creachey.
Yes.
Nagle.
Yes.
Warfer.
Yes.
Rappel.
Yes.
Sweet.
Yes.
Ideas.
Yes.
Okay, first item is a public hearing on the application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development for a community development block grant, for the first public planning grant for the development of a downtown revitalization master plan grant of need for sixty thousand dollars, resolution to authorize the medal of grant application. Open up the public hearing.
I just want to make sure with the record, there is acknowledgement of the letters of support that were included. And I don't know if you want to list them from a specific individual. I have not received any other comments, there have been conversations at Greater Wauhui Development Foundation. I think you hopefully saw from the letters of support that, um, I think it's something that the community would be, uh, very excited to have completed and participated in. I don't know, do you want to, this is Tom Bliss, he's from Southeast Nebraska Development District. Do you want to offer any, add anything or talk about it, the program or?
Come forward, do.
Yeah.
Or do you want to do it maybe outside the public hearing or in the public hearing?
Sure, well, actually, in the public hearings, so you can make note of it, because we'll include the notes to in the application. My name is Tom Bliss, I'm the director for CIND. DTR projects are a wonderful way to revitalize your downtown, DTR, downtown revitalization. It's a great tool for business people to take advantage of, to maybe, um, improve the solid of the building, maybe replace the roof, maybe replace gutters, that sort of thing. The city can also be a little bit more aggressive in regards to combining it to, see, we public works types of projects, sidewalks, streets, period pieces, a period trash receptacles and lighting, but it is a really good tool to make improvements to this small town.
This is the application for sixty thousand, is it breakdown, is it possible we get a smaller amount or?
So you'd be applying for the full amount, um, which is, I leave, I look my notes over here, sorry. You'd be applying for the full amount of fifty thousand dollars. We see these, uh, the proposals for these from planning consultants, they usually turn it off at forty to forty five. So we ask for the maximum amount, just in case it comes in, but typically we see them bringing a little bit of other in in this, and we've done these projects in David City, Seaworth, three or four times, Everbury, Debrin, a couple of times. So, yeah, they, it's a very popular project.
So then we write the application or who does it actually write? You will help us do that.
We're actually working on it right now.
Okay, and then the timeframe here is?
The timeframe, these, the application is due September fifteenth.
Okay.
Uh, so you would hear whether the project has been awarded. Every year it's a little bit different, um, we only say first part of November, and then probably this time next year or actually probably April next year, uh, you'd be soliciting for bids for a bank, for a engineering firm to to write the plan. And then you just give about a year to write it, to prepare it, just so you guys can get lots of public, uh, support, uh, public feedback, that sort of thing.
I think one thing we did talk about when we were talking, uh, is potentially soliciting bids for the work even before we know whether we're getting the grant or not, so long as we're following the federal process and not expending any funds that we expect to be reimbursed on.
Right.
That would be, we could get ourselves to the point where if a grant award is made, we're ready to pull the trigger. And I don't know how long it takes to get the paperwork and the grant agreement signed, but even if it was after the first of the year, we would still be in a position to start the process.
Sure, yeah, that's a great idea, uh, you can certainly expedite the process by doing multiple activities at the same time. So if the grant is awarded, you are, you've heard the word, the term shovel ready, that's essentially what you're trying, shovel ready, so you can move forward better.
So the grants is for fifty, or what's what's our cost in all this upfront before we, I mean, I realize there's going to cost after, you know, we start actually moving.
Seventy five, twenty five.
So you would be asking for fifty, um, or fifty, you'd make it a grant request for fifty three thousand, your match would be ten thousand. But if the bids come in lower, um, it's, I think, twenty percent, so.
Okay, so twenty percent of whatever it is, that's what our cost is.
Yeah.
Realistically, that's what we're asking taxpayers for the little, you can write a grant, can we get some free money for putting up twenty percent?
Right, and ultimately you'll have a a pretty substantial document, kind of like your comp plan, but it really focuses specifically on your downtown.
I think I did share a couple versions of some downtown revitalization plans in other communities, previously ones.
Well, and the actual grant writing you're doing, and that's because of our membership incentive.
Correct.
We re-up every year and this is what we get, which is nice, I appreciate it.
Correct, no, thank you. Yeah. Do you have any other questions? I think it's a great opportunity, I really do, and I think your your constituents will be happy with the results.
Question. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close, okay. I'll second it.
What's that for you? Warfer?
Yes.
Rappel?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Nagle?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Creachey?
Yes.
I'm just, one thing I have to help you share this information and then head on out and watch the whole TV.
So we've been partnering, the city partnered with us to do a community survey, I'm hoping some of you got that and you returned it. This was an income survey only, and what we're trying to do is qualify the city for a program called Community Development Block Grant or CDVG. So CDVG is a federal grant through HUD that allows access, or allows certain communities, low to moderate income communities, access to this grant fund. Um, the grant program is used for a number of purposes, streets, sidewalks, community facilities, libraries, fire stations, fire trucks. But the community, once again, has to be considered low to moderate income. Low to moderate income is fifty one percent of your population has to make eight percent of the county's median. So for math's sake, if the county's median income was fifty thousand, fifty one percent of your population, we have to make four of us, or less. So we worked with Melissa, we worked with the city, they, your staff, they've done an amazing job. We, the, and really quickly, normally we qualify communities through census data. You guys are so close to being fifty one percent. So that's why I called Melissa and we said, okay, we've got an idea, if you'd like to try this, and, um, she worked with us, and we kept, we're really, really close. So right now, we have, we have mailed out seven hundred surveys to random selected households. We have a hundred and sixty, one hundred and sixty responses, that's with, or, yeah, one hundred and sixty responses out of three rounds. So we mailed out the survey three times. We are, we are past the minimum response rate, so we had to have a certain number of people responding. We're at forty five point six percent LMI. So we can look at this from a couple different ways. So we can kind of lump all of the responses together to create a CDVG eligible portion of the community. So let's say we look at the top quadrant of Wauhui and say, okay, this area is fifty one percent low to moderate income. And then your block grant would only be eligible for that portion of the community. So you could do, once again, sidewalks, streets, fire suppression, that sort of stuff. Or we could do a fourth round and try to get to fifty one percent. Uh, if we did that, once again, your entire community would be eligible for block grant. Block grant is usually similar to what this planning grant is, it's a twenty percent match. I will say, communities like Wyomar, they have cracked the code on this, they understand how to use it, they've applied three times, they've, um, I don't know how many streets they they paid in Wyomar, but they've gotten close to about one point two million dollars in street repairs and only out of pocket about three hundred, four hundred thousand. So it's a really good, um, investment, it's your tax dollars coming back to help your community. So if you would like to move forward to the fourth round, we would encourage you to let your constituents know to respond to the surveys because, as I said, we sent out seven hundred and we've gotten a hundred and sixty in return, or return. That's a lot that haven't returned, but if you'd want to work with your constituents or you want to issue a media release or a press release or put it on social media or something like that, and we get fifty one percent, you guys could really, um, do some great public works sort of things here. I'm trying to think what other communities have done, uh, Wyomar, once again, cracked the code, they, they're doing a water project now. They bought a fire truck.
There is a, there is a census block here in Wauhui.
Yeah.
That does need the LMI.
There is, yeah. And that's, that's over by the.
Senior Center.
Yeah, I was going to say Senior Center.
But.
Around the baseball field around St. Park.
And so, yes. There's also other ways you can qualify from as to, of course, CDVG and not as elimination of substandard LMI, right? Which is why we're able to apply.
Which is what we're trying to do tonight with the planning grant. So what will happen is they will come in and they'll assess your downtown, and it, it's called eliminating slum and light or substandard and light. Only issue of substandard and biased theaters rather, I messed that up somehow. But essentially what you're trying to do is they come in and they'll say, okay, fifty percent or fifty one percent of your buildings are over sixty years old. That's probably accurate.
Yeah, and we have done that just recently, so.
Yeah, so, um, we'll take advantage of that to, you know, help fix up buildings near downtown businesses.
There is also the eligibility through designated, a special population.
Yeah, letting clientele is a little bit harder to get, so HUD is that, HUD determines a community is eligible by fifty one percent of its population to be low to moderate income. The elimination of slum and light, or, um, they just determine certain populations are considered low to moderate income. And that's people, individuals over sixty two. That is certain children, uh, creche children, but there's, there's a couple areas we can qualify. It is pretty hard to qualify in Nebraska that way, um, because it's so competitive with the fifty one percent communities. But we'll help in whatever way you want, if you'd like to do a fourth round, let us know, we'll send that out, work with your staff. Your staff, they've done an amazing job helping with this, um, so we'll defer to you guys in how you like to move forward.
What's the timeframe on this one?
So the timeframe on this one, um, you're applying for a planning grant this year. We don't really have a timeframe on this, uh, we just want to make sure that you'd be eligible by next funding cycle, which would be this year or next year, this time.
Okay, so we've got time to do.
Yeah.
Some more of it.
Yeah, and it's, there's no cost, we're, we're covering all the costs, we're covering all the stamps, the envelopes, uh, stuff, I think we've stuffed something like ten thousand envelopes or two dozen surveys or something like this, uh, this past year, so, um, it's a, it's a really good deal for you guys. You just have to say, yeah, it's an added fourth round.
It's disappointing that there aren't more people, number one, who understand why, I think that's probably a big part of it.
It really is.
There's a lot of people that say, probably, that's none of your business and I must fill this out, right? I'm sure there's the.
Well, that, my first thought was, that's mail, I don't even get bills from mail in there because they're all automated, so I don't open my mail. My, maybe my percent of those are in cash, I don't, so if I got it, I apologize, I've also been.
Well, you've got a lot of questions, we're not too intrusive.
Yeah, and and it's it's a range, so there's a couple income surveys you can do, like through USDA, they actually ask what's on your tax form. And I I wouldn't fill it out, uh, but this is a range, it's, you make less than this or you make more than this. And it's populated, if you have eight people in the family, you make less than this, so you make more than this, so. They, we don't ask for any information, and honestly, once we get the, once we fill out that, or once we enter the data off of that survey, goes into a box and it goes in our storage unit or our storage closet, and then ten years from now, when the grants close out, we shred it. But no one ever looks at it, honestly, we take that data, put it into the form and submit that form to DDB, and if you have fifty one percent, you're good to go.
And we are currently at forty five.
Forty five point six.
So we need some other follow up session.
We need a few more.
We want the.
We got it covered.
Okay, their labor, their votes, like, how can you go wrong?
Right.
We just need more people to respond, have your responsibility to say, hey, yes, please do this.
And we send that number, economic development.
Um, well, we, we could probably want to do a campaign, whether it's a social media campaign or writing an article to get it in the newspaper with, or both, write, talk about it at, I don't know, maybe go to senior coffee near or go to talk.
Can you actually post the questions online so people would know?
I don't know if we can or not, did we do yours electronically? I can't remember, some people use, we're already doing it electronically this year. Okay, but what we can do is we can send, um, kind of a FAQ sheet out to Melissa, she can distribute it to you guys. So in your church or baseball or the C store or the coffee shop, and someone says, what is this thing I'm getting? You guys know how to answer the questions.
Right.
And, um, you can debunk a lot of the rumors and the myths that come with it. But we'll send out a fourth round and we'll work with city staff, once again, they've done an amazing job, um, helping us with this, so. Thanks again for your support and your, your membership, and, um, we'll make sure that this grant's going to work, that's a word.
I don't know if I can guarantee that.
Well, thanks for your explanation. We, but we, I mostly have a pretty good feeling with grants, but. All right, thank you guys.
Basically, we need to approve the grant.
There was a motion.
Yeah.
To approve the motion.
Business.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, any other questions?
Warfer?
Yes.
Nagle?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Creachey?
Yes.
Rappel?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yeah.
Number two, public hearing and approval of the final plat, of the replats of lots seven to ten and part of lot eleven, lot one twenty six, County Edition. It's happened to be the north side of North Cornish and East, East Bates Street.
Sorry.
That's a learning match, I had to go look that up. So they're splitting it out, so I got two lots.
Yeah, the law is.
We're not probably, they, they're.
Yeah, I can comment on it, so, two or whatever.
Up to it.
Um, so, yeah, basically this replat, they've got those several lots there, they, um, have a buyer for the, like you said, the burning house. And then they're splitting off a separate lot, so this is cleaning all that up, instead of having several, separate lots, we've basically got two lots. One that they will sell, the house is on there, um, as you can see up there now, the existing house is there. The, it doesn't meet current setbacks or whatnot, but we're not changing those boundaries anyway. The only line that we are changing is that east property line, which they have plenty of setback on the rear yard of that. That lot ten R meets the lot, minimum lot requirements for R three, so we're not having to worry about any nonconforming locks or nonconforming structures that we are creating. or non-conforming structures that we are creating.
What's our size mean? Seventy-five?
Seventy-five hundred, I think.
Discuss that mini box thing we're doing and stuff. Find out.
Right.
Even suffering now, it's like half a square block, isn't it?
Yeah, like three quarters of a block, yeah.
That's big.
Three quarters of a block.
It's been for seven, eight years.
Any questions?
Motion plus public hearing.
Second. The motion second, plus public hearing, go home.
Orford?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yep.
Creachy?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Rappel?
Yes.
Nagel?
Yes.
What's your design? Motion to approve the final block?
Second.
What's already called?
You.
East side.
I have Creachy, motion, and Orford, second. Okay.
I don't know.
Creachy?
Yes.
Orford?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Nagel?
Yes.
Rappel?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Number three, public hearing and the final plat for a replat for lot four, Robert's third edition. And lot three, Robert's third edition and second replat. This is the north L and East Sixteenth Street. Open to public hearing.
Yeah, so once again, this has been kind of a busy area. We've visited this a couple of times. But essentially, that's, and I can't read it from here, with the lot.
Lot four R.
Four R. Basically, they are just extending their backyard to the, it would be the west. So once again, we're not changing width, that we have to worry about a non-conforming structure or anything. If you recall back before that lot three, three, is it three R there? The bigger L-shaped one?
Two R.
Two R.
Do you need glasses?
I do. You bet. I need more money to get four glasses. I'm in that low rate. I never got surveyed, but.
That's got to be hard to start.
So, yeah, they had extended the building's backyard before. So once again, we're not creating a non-conforming lot, a non-conforming structure, anything of that nature. Planning commission recommended it. There is an existing easement that's not shown across there, but that's not changing or eliminating any easements for utilities or anything else like that. So it's just changing that.
Didn't we talk about this last meeting?
You asked, the waiver was separate from this.
We've seen that a lot of times.
You have to do that and then they have a planning permission and this is the final part.
Motion for this public hearing.
Second.
You know what to do with this one. You just think, hold on a second.
Those all the public hearing.
Ideas? Sweet?
Yes.
Creachy?
Yes.
Nagel?
Yes.
Orford?
Yes.
Rappel?
Yes.
Action on the replat or final plat. It's motion to approve. Whichever one must be used for this.
Yeah.
Move to second and go home.
Ideas?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Orford?
Yes.
Rappel?
Yes.
Nagel?
Yes.
Creachy?
Yes.
Okay, action, I have not required a public hearing. First on this proposal to complete the light and substandard determination study by Ray Consulting Services LLC for the city of Wauhui. Most of you are going to speak to that.
Yes, I am. So first of all, Ray Planning Solutions is Jeff Ray. Jeff Ray has done quite a bit of work for the city in his role with J E O. He is starting his own consulting because he has taken a job as a planner with the city of Fremont in a part-time capacity. So he's, his last day with J E O, I think, was shortly before this. This property would be the, you've all seen the property south of the airport that's been listed for sale. This would be incorporating part of this, a part of that property.
About two hundred and some acres. Yeah, two hundred and seven.
Yeah.
Yes.
We do have the capacity statute limits us to fifty percent of our area within city limits. We currently are at thirty-four and a half, thirty-five. By the time you factor in the N R D's annexation, what do we annex before that? There's something else that bumped up our number, so. Yeah, that'll go. This, even with this, we're still going to be under fifty percent.
That's a big area.
It's a big area.
It is a big area. And quite honestly, the reason why it's coming to you is because I believe there may be some movement in that property, so.
So it's the city, we're taking upon ourselves to get a study going in anticipation of maybe helping this property have different orders?
Yes. And the price is less than what we have paid for the two more larger lines and standard studies. So the downtown was maybe eight to ten thousand, it's a seven thousand. And it is, again, it's not approval of any, any kind of redevelopment agreement. We're not committing any T I P funds. We're simply making that option as something that we can put on the table. The cost of this is something that is recoupable, reimbursable through T I P proceeds.
That does make sense. Potential.
Potentially, yes.
It does make sense to do. I would make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Any other questions? Go home.
Creachy?
Yes.
Rappel?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Nagel?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Orford?
Yes.
Number two, proposal from F H U Consulting to complete updated traffic study and optional analysis for roads access points to Highway seventy-seven ninety-two expressway near the Fifteenth Street intersection.
So I apologize, when I got back from my meeting, I thought this was uploaded into the packet before, but it now is. F H U is the company who has done all the traffic studies for the city of Wauhui. If you recall, a couple of years ago, J E O approached us about having one done or dry run in hopes of development of the property that they own south of Casey's. They've, we did that, but we agreed that they would fund us, fund it a hundred percent. So that was at no cost to us. This is a piece that would update the traffic counts, update the use plans that there are for that area, which are a little bit less, would accumulate less traffic, and also evaluate this with the state. We have a new director with the state and I think her plans for making four lane from Omaha to Lincoln around Wauhui are more aggressive maybe than what it has been previously. One of the pieces that we're including in this is an evaluation of alternatives for the intersection of Fifteenth Street and the expressway. And primarily, the reason why we're doing that is because the cost benefit rate number comes back at a high enough factor, which, you know, you could argue, well, what is the value of a life lost? But that's the number that the state looks for in terms of bringing forward safety money. I think the roundabout by Brown Bars was funded with highway safety money. And that's, I'm absolutely hoping we don't come into that same kind of situation at Fifteen. But no one can say that that is, there are not challenges with that intersection. So this would have, I was in consultation with Department of Roads as to whether this would be beneficial to them or not. And they, absolutely, yes, if we have this done and come forward with the information. It's one check that can be on the box that we can use to ask for funds. And even when, you know, we had the meeting out at the A R P C or whatever it's called, where Department of Transportation was there and talking about their, sorry, what's the name of the, the group? Where they take projects and match them with federal grant funding. And I think having this data along with, you know, our population increases, our regional service, the increase, the widening of the road from Omaha to Lincoln to make the four lane, the comments that we've heard from the county about the improvements to the road. I think all of those things sort of are pieces that may not be useful immediately right now today, but in applying for funds, grant opportunities and getting something done with that intersection. So if you have questions now, if you have questions.
It really needs to be done, but it really should be a cost share with the county, that they gain just as much as we do. But it won't go anywhere.
We can ask?
Wouldn't hurt.
I do.
I mean, we've got to have that on the shelf. It's got to be done in order to do anything with that intersection. Yeah. Make a motion to approve?
I'll say it.
Questions? Go home.
Creachy?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Orford?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Nagel?
Yes.
Rappel?
Yes.
Third, approval of the new proposed pay scale for city of Wauhui and Wauhui Utilities and Boys following twenty-twenty-five salary survey.
So the information in your packet is very similar. It is the same information that I submitted to you about the process previously. But what is included is the pay scale that's being proposed. The finance committee met up last week and did dive into it fairly in depth. I don't know if you have any comments from a finance committee that you'd like to make. I'll answer any questions you have about the process, about how we placed the positions on the, how we adjusted the pay scale. I'll answer whatever questions you have.
Well, I think finance committee too. And we felt we've got good employees and we need to keep them. And we're losing employees to bigger cities. We're very aware of where we're sitting. And the study helped keep us in line. We were pretty close on most of them, I think.
Yeah, I will say.
I think we're under a bit of threat.
Right. The, if you recall, we specifically have brought, the police department was one, the street department, we brought forward adjustments to those pay scales previously. And because of that, those specific departments are, there's less of an adjustment. So that action that we took earlier, and it was primarily because we were having difficulty filling the positions, was very much in line, so.
Yeah, not good, but it's just supposed to have that same position for everything else. Somebody else will direct it along. Is the world trapped to do this every how many years? Three, two, three, four years?
This one was last done in twenty-twenty-one, implemented in twenty-two. So I think about every three years is what we're talking about there.
I would make motion to approve?
Second.
This is to be clear. I also wanted, which we did clarify this in the finance committee. This, there still will be conversation about a cost of living adjustment as we have done every year in October, so. That's outside of this. Sorry, I didn't.
And how does that, that go out, that information on the poll go out to all employees in the base shift?
The rate has not yet been determined. I was just making the point that we had, we talked about this in the finance committee meeting, but for the others, others, just making the point that there will be something on poll that will come to you in addition to this.
Motion, maybe seconded, questions? Go home.
Orford?
Yes.
Creachy?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Nagel?
The state.
Rappel?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Okay, motion hearing. I don't know what any comments I need to make unless somebody's got some questions to leave.
One question I have is, I've been a while since I've heard about the, sort of the J E Os doing force about public engagement, possible facility upgrades for the city.
Yes.
Just assuming you were ready for this process.
So I've been working with the team from J E O. I'm trying to think, maybe the second week in August or the first week in August, a team member from J E O came out and had a great conversation with city hall staff, police department staff, fire hall staff. And then there's a little bit of silence. That individual has moved on to a different job. And so the one piece we have yet is them having a conversation with Kevin at the civic center and meeting that scheduled. We have, I've gotten some preliminary information on marketing and like website materials, but I agree it's time for a facilities committee meeting. Interesting.
I was just curious.
I do have one other thing that I, I guess I would like to know what level of involvement you want to have or, I don't, certainly don't want you to break any laws in terms of.
That's quite an interdiction. We appreciate that.
I'm sure you have seen, I'm sure you have seen some of the news, the two constitutional amendment or the petitions that are going to be going out about changes to valuations. And they were introduced yesterday. So there's one, one petition where they're talking about changing the percentage of value that can be taxed to, on residential property from, what is it, ninety-five right now to fifty? And then there's another one where that limits property tax valuation growth, right? Then there's also a conversation that's about epic, they're reviving that. And it's all in an effort to address the property tax issue that there is in the press. And so I don't know what you're, whether you just want to personally yourselves watch the news or whether you want me to bring you up to date on information, whether you want to be involved in any of the league informational sessions. Let me know your level of involvement. Like I said, I was at the small cities legislative committee meeting today and it was, it was brought up that it is, you know, there's, there's lots of pieces that go into the conversation. And going out to the door and knocking and saying, would you like to sign this position? Your property taxes are going to drop by fifty percent. I think a fair number of people would probably sign that without the, no one would story that, right? So.
That's awkward.
So anyway, if you're interested in learning more, I can, we cannot, we cannot be in favor or against, but we can take a position where we're providing information and about how it may impact the city of Wauhui, so.
Well, if property taxes are cut and have, what half of the services do we not offer?
And the legislature, we, I've heard several times today that they're, that they have a financial battle ahead of them in this next session. Theirs, their revenue isn't coming in what they thought it was. And so they're asking state agencies apparently to cut ten percent.
The fact that it's a short session, who's going to champion the epic tax deal? Senator?
I don't know. I think Erwin is still part of the conversation. I know he's not in the legislature.
Yeah, well, he'll be there.
But I think that the others are, the other is being Tom Neska, who was the head of the state patrol. Kirk Tanner, who was on the, he went out, was he a regent? Is that right?
Wasn't he board of, didn't board education?
Yeah.
Anything else? Any adjournments?
Sorry, guys. I'm going to be that guy.
Sorry.
I'm going to bed eight o'clock over there. When was that tragedy really going to start and when would it get done?
This is still recording.
Fifteen thousand dollars for?
Fourteen.
Fourteen?